Right on that. But we'll get started here. I'd like to call to order the town of McCandless meeting of town council for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. If you all could join me in the.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible.
Thank you, everybody. Now, for the town of the meeting, most of you have been to these before. We will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civilian respect. Because in the end, we are all neighbors. A few announcements as we get started. Our community day is September ninth. All the details are there and on our website. I hope to see you there. Everything starts at four o'clock with fireworks to end the evening. And the McCandless North Allegheny Heritage and Cultural Center will host. Trolley Trails Through the North Hills on September twenty sixth from five to seven. The FDPC will also host a Shining Star Gala on September, on Saturday, November twenty fifth at the Chadwick. Which will honor eight volunteers from our community. Further information is available on our town website. Is there anybody on council that would like to make an announcement? Something that I might have missed. Now for the public, is there any comments on any of the agenda items we have here this evening? If you'd like to speak, come up to the mic, name an address, and you have five minutes. Everyone had the August fourteenth town council meeting minutes in their packet. Did anybody have any revisions that they wanted made?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of town council for August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Next up, reports of committees. Mr. Casey, could you take us through the administration and finance committee?
I would be happy to. Miss Trish.
Y'all received the checklisting in your packet. I can entertain any questions you may have at the moment.
And I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to take a motion to approve checklist D number seven dated July first, twenty twenty-three to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three totaling eight million. Eight hundred fifty-eight thousand, sorry. Five hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-four cents is submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board at the town website.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Now, if we could please review the.
You also received in your packet this dashboard, the financial dashboard for the seven months ending July thirty-first. We are. We are about the same place we were last year with one exception, and that's with real estate transfer tax. We're about fifty percent behind where we were last year, but we do have that budget lowered, so I am not concerned yet. If I, and I do believe that other revenue items will make up that difference if we are lower than anticipated. A lot of that has to do with the market as well as the real estate interest rates. I can answer any other questions you may have. You will see a large jump next month because we are starting to receive. Real estate tax payments different from the estate transfer tax. Real estate payments are the discount period ends August thirty-first, so we have a steady stream of taxpayers coming in through town hall this month. Any questions?
How excited are you for budget season?
We are well underway. The departments had their first deadline on Friday, so Brian and I will be going through it through the month of September. Any input from council is more than welcome and encouraged.
Thank you.
How is the new tax package?
We're working on it. Any other questions?
Communications report. Communication back refer is in your packet. One thing I would note, our websites. That we've been working on for better part of a year plus. Has finally launched and I think it's working out well. Still have a couple little things here and there to to fix up and clean up, but. So far, it's been a nice refreshing new website for residents and businesses to use.
Thanks for getting that done.
The team put that together at the end of the day.
Great. Liaison reports, Dr. Ropa. You had no meeting. Okay, President Tal.
Same with the the North Hills Cog, no meeting.
Okay, then I'll turn it over to Ms. Sizinright. Wait, I guess I have to ask. Would anybody like to make a public comment?
Specific to the administration and finance.
Oh, okay. I I didn't realize that the communication report dealt with what it dealt with, dealt with the website. If I'd have known that, I would have commented on it about the agenda meeting, and I could wait until the end if you'd like.
Wherever you think it fits better.
I think you can comment now.
Now be grateful. Now would be a great time.
Name and address, sir?
Glenn Nelson, two oh five eight Cherry Hill Road. Let me, let me apologize in advance because a couple of things I'm going to talk about are can be a little bit boring. And it borders on a lot of, a lot of minutia, but. I went in trying to, as I mentioned last time I was here, I was interested in the, in the, in the personnel committee, and so I started looking at. The website to look up at minutes and agendas, et cetera, and. I would, I know we're in a process of transition to the, to the new website, but I've identified, I've identified a few problems. And I'd be happy to, not to go through every one of these things because it would bore you to death. But if there's someone that I could talk to and it would be helpful, I'd be happy to do that. But I don't know whether or not there's a template for what's on the website or not, but. If I take, if I took a law, there's a question about how long minutes will be available. Okay, for council, it appears to be. The current year and three back. Okay, for some other committees, it appears to be, it, that number varies. Okay, sometimes it's zero, it, it sometimes it's two, once in one instance, it's four. I don't want to go through all those because it'll, like I tell you, I've told you it'll bore you to death, okay? When I look at the minutes, there are on, this is on, on the website. All the meetings, all the minutes for town council are there. This is very variable for other committees, okay? For environment, for example, there hasn't been anything there since July. Some are up, some are more up to date, others are, there's a lot of missing, a lot of things, a lot of things that are missing. I don't know what's happening with the media because the media is applicable for council for planning and technology. It's not seem, it doesn't seem to be active for, for the other, for the other committees. This, this sort of becomes important because since you, since the time of the Zoom meetings have been terminated. This is your primary source of reference if you can't attend to meetings, so. Let me go back to personnel for just a minute, okay? In April, there was an agenda. There were no minutes. In May, there was no meeting. In June, I'm not sure what happened because there's no, there's, there was no agenda, there were no minutes. When I get to July, okay, there was no agenda, okay? However, minutes were approved. Now, the minutes were approved. And I think this is the typo, to be fair, but the minutes were approved on June, July the twenty-second for a meeting that was held on July the twenty-fifth. In fairness, I think that, in fairness, I think that was a typo, okay? In August, there was no agenda, okay? There are no minutes yet. Now, that's, that's appropriate because you haven't had a September meeting, so you can't have the minutes yet, okay? There was a meet, there was a meeting held in August, though. Because there was an announcement on the website saying that the meeting had been changed from, I think it's the third Wednesday in a month now. To the fourth Tuesday every month, but there's no indication. Anywhere that this was ever discussed by anybody. It just, it just sort of appeared, so. I, I find, I find some of the, I find this a little bit troubling. Like I said, I'd be, if, if you think this is, this is important. I'd be more than happy to sit down and try and sit and talk with somebody and see if we can work on some of these things. So, thank you very much.
Yep, we'll take you up on that. We'll get you some of the details you have, and we'll get it to our staff that manages the website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Let's, where do we end up? Oh, is there any other, I guess we'll call for any other public comment from administration and finance?
Okay, give me size right.
Thank you. The staff reports, planning and zoning.
Okay, good evening. So I've got two applications for your consideration coming up today. As well as a pending ordinance resolution for a proposed temporary uses amendment to the zoning. How about now? We good? Okay. Um, I can, I can get louder. All right, I'll use my teacher voice. So I've got two plans. We good now? Cool. On the, on the agenda for your consideration tonight, as well as we have a pending ordinance resolution. For a temporary uses, basically cleanup amendment to our recently adopted zoning code. So I'll get into more detail of that. That's the third item on the report. I'll hit that a little bit later. But as I mentioned previously, sort of wrapping up the adoption phase, there are a couple of things that we wanted to pay a little bit more attention to. Or, you know, maybe there's something that, once we actually get into using the code that we go, oh, this isn't quite working. The way that we expected that it would. So, you know, once we get to that point, keep that in mind, but I am going to try to stick to the order. Of what I've got on my staff report here, so going back to the beginning. Hillview Lane Overflow Parking Lot for North Allegheny School District is the first item on there. This one kind of does what it says on the tin. It's a proposed parking lot that would be gravel per their request. Right off of Hillview Lane, the reason being, some, you know, whether it's bus driver use because it's beside the bus, the bus lot. Or overflow for athletic events, which I think at this point is kind of the primary concern, that they have been seeing people. Parking down past the residences on Hillview Lane during some of the, you know, more well-attended events. And so they're proposing, I think it's a little over twenty parking spots. In this area, right, right by the entrance to Hillview. So this was discussed at the planning commission meeting this past month. The modification request that they had is for that, that gravel lot. So this plan is technically still reviewed under the old code because it was submitted prior to the adoption. Of our new zoning in Saldo, so. This, I mean, the modification language is more or less the same, but the exact details are slightly different. It boils down to. A modification request burden of proof is that the result be equal to or better than the code as written. And our code in the old version allows for paving material of asphalt, concrete. Or otherwise approved by council, so alternate materials are permitted to be proposed. They just have to go through this modification request process, basically. During the planning commission's discussion of the issue, they preferred to attach time limit to their recommendation. So their, their proposal, you know, that they have brought forth to council for your consideration tonight. Is that if we waive the asphalt paving, that we put a limit of three years, that it could be a gravel surface. Before they would either have to have it paved or come back for an extension of the modification request approval. Other than that, that largely the plan is compliant. There are a couple little formatting thing, you know, items, cleanup things, but that's. Quite normal for a plan at this stage. Those are all identified in the engineer's review letter, so. Once we get to this point on the agenda, if you all could keep in mind that if you do want to include the time limit. In a grant of the modification request, that should be stated at the time the motion is made. The motion is simply written. You know, to approve or deny as is, but that condition, if somebody wants to include it, should be stated at that time. That one was a little lengthier than I usually do for the development application, so if anyone has questions now, I'm happy to take a break.
Is this, if you're down at the bottom of Hillview. And you're going up to Carson. It's not over on the bus garage side. You're looking at that little U shape as you're going up the hill.
I would have to look at the plan. Yeah, I'm, I'm fairly certain it's, it's right by it, but.
It's, it's on the bus garage side.
Okay, any other questions in this part? Yes.
If we left out that you have to do it in three years, and just, it's goodwill, we do a lot of. Business with the school district. Do you see any issue with that?
I mean, I guess that's kind of a matter of opinion, you know, and on what people prefer. I think that there are potentially some benefits to it, one being, you know, gravel, although it's not completely. Pervious, it certainly infiltrates a little bit better than complete, you know, asphalt paving. I think the nature of the use of the lot potentially being for athletic events means that it, it's, it's going to be a little more friendly to the person that's going to be. Using it, you know, it's, hopefully nobody's coming to a, a football game or a baseball game or anything in heels. You know, but, so I, I don't think in terms of the actual use, the surface is really that much of a problem. I think that, and maybe we can talk about this more when we get to the actual application on the agenda, but the school district's. Stated reasoning for this is partially cost. It's a lot less expensive to do a gravel lot rather than asphalt. As well as, you know, there, there is sort of the master planning that they're going through for all of their facilities and various campus properties. And I think their position is that gravel would give them a little more flexibility as that process moves forward. To alleviate some of the parking need now, while not, you know, putting a bunch of pavement in the ground. They're still doing all the stormwater management for it. But maybe they don't want to pave it unless they know that that lot's going to be in that location forever. On the other hand, you know, the, the planning commission discussion kind of brought forth some concerns from some commissioners about, are we setting a precedent? You know, what's sort of the, what's the inflection point for why we say yes or no to a gravel lot? This is under the old code, so technically we're not really setting a precedent for anything anymore. These are the last applications, you know, that, that we have in the outgoing one. But, you know, I, I still understand their point that if it hinged on something like just cost, what's going to stop a business from making the same request? But with modification requests, they're not the same as variances. Variances that go before the zoning hearing board are a little bit more of a legal precedent set. Whereas modification requests are discretionary and are built in. To give council options, basically to, to enforce certain Saldo standards more or less.
Can we go back to exactly where this is to be located? I don't know if Bill, you could address it or not. So, right, there's another corner there by the bus garage is a big sign. Okay, so it compares to that sign. Where are you talking, going up the hill? So aesthetically, right now it's beautiful. It's all green and trees, so aesthetically. Is that going to deter from how nice it looks now?
Is this a parking lot for the public? Or a parking lot for buses?
It's my understanding that it would be used by the public during athletic events primarily.
But not.
They're, they're not like bus length spots.
This isn't a parking lot for buses.
See, part of the problem is, I understand it. Don't correct me, please, if I'm wrong. Bus drivers get there early, get a parking spot. They leave, they come back to do the afternoon business. They can't get a place to park.
Where are they parking?
As mostly a safety matter, the alternative is they continue to park on Hillview on the sides of the road. And this helps alleviate that at sporting events and also during bus drivers. It takes them off of Hillview and puts them in a lot.
How many parking lots are there around the bus garage? Well, not the parking lot. Let's talk down by the maintenance down there. There's some on the right side, some on the left side. Then up above the bus garage, there's a whole new parking lot up there. How many parking spots are there? Did you think about that little U shape area on the right-hand side of Hillview? Because you, that would be out of sight. It wouldn't aesthetically take away from the campus. Yes.
So, a couple of things, you mentioned about the drivers not having place to park when they return for the afternoon runs. I'm not sure if that's a true concern because NEI does not allow students to drive. So there's not students filling in the spaces between the first bus run and the afternoon. But I, and I'm curious, is it correct that this parking space would add parking for twenty-two vehicles? I don't know that, I don't see a great impact for things like when I've been stuck. Trying to find a parking space at NAIS, like at open house nights, et cetera. I don't think, I don't know that twenty-two spots are going to make a difference.
And they shuttle. Well, so just to be clear, they, this is, it's a permitted use. I write, they can build the parking lot either way. The question at hand is gravel or asphalt.
It's just whether we're going to let them have it in gravel. That's the only reason it's in chronic.
I think maybe the, the deep dive into the details of the plan might be a little better. Served when we get to the, the presentation, the motion. Not to cut anyone off, I just. No, no problem.
To me, I, if it is, if it is already an inevitable permitted use. You know, environmentally, I think a gravel lot makes more sense.
Thank you, Trish.
In, in terms of, of water, you know, taking up solid surfaces and so forth.
It's, it's a real consideration, certainly.
Can you have a Google map image for us and when this comes up?
Yeah, I can, when, once I'm.
Bill can come up and we can ask any of.
I have the zoom loaded up, so I can just start doing a screen share when we get to.
Yeah.
To that part.
So does anybody have anything else for RJ on the other items on her?
Sorry, I, I didn't mean to derail, but I, I have a couple more to hit on. So, yeah, I'll, I'll keep the Valvoline brief because that one's a little more straightforward. No modification requests there. It, it's just. Basically, a redevelopment of the existing ten-five thirty-three Perry Highway, which I believe was a Northwest Bank. Until about a year or two ago, it's the property that shares the access with McDonald's. So, most of this is pretty buttoned up there, just a couple very minor comments left on the engineer's review letter. The planning commission did request during their review that a no-left-turn sign be added at the entrance onto Perry Highway. Because that is not, there's not like a, a dash line there. You're not supposed to be turning. In and out, you know, to go northbound on nineteen or coming from northbound nineteen. So, you know, we hope that everyone obeys the traffic laws, but it doesn't hurt to give a little bit of an extra visual reminder. So that was a condition that they had requested, and the developer has already agreed to add that to their plan. They are also, we've got a couple representatives online because the designers are out of state. So when we get to that, that point on the agenda, feel free to ask any questions, but that one's a little more straightforward at, at this point. So the last item that I have on here is, at least it's the one that I'm most interested and excited about. Because I always like amending zoning code. That's, that's, I know, fun for me, maybe not everyone else, but. So as I mentioned before, this is sort of one of our first cleanup quality of life amendments that we're bringing forward. As we sort of get used to working and living with the new code, you know, there are some things that make total sense when you read them on paper. But when you get into the particulars of a situation, or somebody says, well, okay, what if I do this, or, or, well, what if this happens, you go. I don't know if it's really specified in there, and so you find that, you know, you, you need to clean things up a bit, so. I think that this will be a quite normal thing for us in the first handful of months as we get used to, to using this code. This particular one is regarding temporary uses. So, in the last month or so, you know, we have a few festivals every year at our churches, you know, different community. Organizations that they throw on an annual basis, and the way that the code reads right now, it could potentially be construed. That they need to go to the zoning hearing board for a special exception for something that's been happening year after year. You know, with just a simple temporary structure tent permit. We also realized that there was not much consideration for temporary structures in general and how they relate to temporary uses. So again, festivals, a backyard graduation party, a backyard wedding, a lemonade stand. Construction staging, when something, you know, building is having work done on it, or when you're having a longer-term development. These are things that. You know, again, until you really start using the code, they don't seem as urgent when you're just simply reading them on paper. But you go, oh, maybe we should be a little more specific so people know what the expectations are and what the process is for getting approved for these different types of things. So the amendment is only a couple pages long. Most of it is just a bit of cleanup text, aside from adding a more clear process. For what goes to the zoning hearing board for review, you know, what's considered grandfathered or. How you can operate year-to-year with an annual event so that you don't have to come back for a new approval every single year. In the text of the amendment, that's, that's much more clear, I think, so people have better expectations and understandings of, you know, what they need to do. To move forward with events like that. So, we're proposing this as a pending ordinance resolution, which essentially means. That while it's being reviewed by the planning commission in the county, once we advertise the public hearing, we are able to function with it. As if it is in force until we either pass it or until a significant enough change is occurred during that process that. You know, we would need to re-advertise it. And the reason for this is we just want to be very clear. As to, you know, the normal things that people can continue to do and not have to worry about. Getting, you know, an event permit for, again, something that, that, the festival that they throw every year or. You know, a birthday party, you rent a tent for a couple days in your backyard. It, it could be construed under the code that that's banned, and that's not what we meant to do at all. So, should you all be comfortable with that? We would move forward with advertising it. Slight change from my staff report. I had the months bumped back one. It should actually be the October twenty-third meeting that we would hold a public hearing on this. And it would be sent to the planning commission for review next week as well as their October meeting with a potential vote in November. So I apologize, the months, like I said, are just one backwards on my report, but the documents have been updated accordingly, if you would like to approve that. Happy to entertain any questions about everything else I've tried to speed run through.
Questions for RJ?
I'll save them for later.
All right, that's.
My question is, or, or do we plan on these minor cleanup things? Do we plan on just having them once or twice a year? Or continually, or what's your strategy?
Well, that kind of depends. I think that it is a good idea to maybe go through sort of. And do, I think actually, our town manager sort of taught me this phrase, a quality of life zoning update. Where, you know, if there are things that we could just tweak a bit, we sort of collect them into one annual process, take a look, see what's working and what isn't. I think that that's more sort of a long-term goal, but there will be things that we identify that either, you know, people are a little confused when they read them in the code. And they make sense to us as people who love it or, you know, do zoning all day, but it's not as user-friendly as we thought it was. Just a couple little things like that that may come up. We have, well, I, in, in the budget request that I've submitted for next year, we have. Some room to work with the consultant that we had been writing the code with prior. She's very efficient and does a great job and is. And is really good at turning thoughts, you know, in your head of what should be in zoning into something that's functional on paper. So. In the early stages, I think it's more reasonable to expect these a little more frequently as things make sense. Um, but. Long-term, we would like to get to maybe an annual schedule.
Yeah, I'd urge you to.
Yeah.
Clean once or twice a year, I think, so we're not continually.
Yeah, the, the.
Getting bogged down.
Public hearings are a bit of a hassle to schedule every month, so that's, that's not the intention long-term for sure.
Yeah, and I'm just add that zoning for me is a living document.
Yeah.
So we're gonna always be looking at ways to improve it instead of waiting too long to, to overhaul completely.
It's, it's important to not be afraid to change it. I think that because it is. A type of ordinance that has more strenuous advertising requirements or can impact people very directly. Um, there's a little bit of nervousness, you know, to get in and make an amendment, but I think that the best zoning code is one that is able to be flexible. And that's part of why we did this project is so it is amendable instead of tripping over itself a bit.
Thank you, RJ. Anything else for RJ? Anybody? Ken?
All right.
Yeah.
I will return, I'm sure, when we have plans.
Yes, I can write, I can write. Do you want to continue with us?
Sure. The ASON reports, Mr. Singer, planning commission.
I think we handled everything planning there. Your, your reports are in your packet if you have any questions.
Zoning board hearing, Ms. Clinton, does somebody have that?
She's online.
Hi, I'm, I'm on here. Thanks, Ms., um, yes, the zoning board, uh, did meet in August. The minutes are not available yet, but the June minutes are in your packet. There was no meeting in July. Um, but I have to say the, uh, zoning board did well working already, um, taking to task the new zoning code. Um, it, I, I mean, I think according to RJ, there were things that could have come up and didn't because of the new changes. Which is, is a positive effect. Appreciate that. If you have any questions, let me know.
Variants that we've seen so far that I know about, there are probably more than half a finance, so we're doing, we're doing good.
Trish, are you done?
Trish? I am. Uh, if you have any questions? If there's no questions, I can close the zoning.
Also, no meeting in September. We just figured that out timing-wise today, so.
No zoning meeting?
That's correct.
No zoning meeting in September.
No zoning in September, thank you.
Thank you. Public comments on planning and zoning committee items? Anybody online? Anybody in the audience? Moving on, recreation committee, Carolyn?
Uh, first up is activities advisor committee. Uh, I'd like to point out, we have our community day coming up on September ninth. Uh. That's pretty much it. And they'll be working on the winter festival afterwards. Are there any questions, comments from council? Here and then we'll move up. The finance development promotional, promotional committee for the Heritage Center for Mary.
Hi, we did meet this past two weeks. I'm going to turn this over to Abby to give a report.
Thank you, Mrs. Eisenwright. Good evening, town council. Thank you for allowing me to update you on the HCC's successes thus far. For twenty twenty-three. My name is Abby LaCoste and I am the volunteer executive director of the McCamless Northern Allegheny Heritage and Cultural Center. And the chair of the HCC's financial development and promotional committee. This report serves as a mid-year update on our events, attendance and operations, and I will again present a comprehensive overview at the end of twenty twenty-three. In the first eight months of twenty twenty-three, we have hosted, been involved with and/or donated volunteer hours on behalf of the HCC. To nine events. The first being the vintage Apple computer games hosted by Scott Buret, for which we had twenty people. Number two, the spring golf outing sponsored by US Mortgage AOM Consultants. Chuck Jackson of State Farm, Eaton Park, Truman Landscaping, Sir Pizza, Steve Bullock over the bar. Chuck's Auto Body, The Fade Shop, Anytime Fitness, Sam's Club and McCamless Crossing's Panera Bread. We participated and hosted the AAC's Treasures in the Trunk Sale in the HCC parking lot with great success. With visibility and foot traffic. We also hosted the EAC to do their rain garden restoration, which is now an annual event. We've had two summer, summer drive-in movies, one in June and one in August. July's date was canceled because of weather and will be rescheduled. Um, August movie had twenty-two cars and over seventy people in attendance. The mini golf tournament at North Park Mini Golf across the street had sixty-four players. And as members of the Heinz History Affiliate Program, the Executive Committee of the Heinz History Center has invited H cap members. To capitalize on Rad's three-free initiative. The Heinz History Center is free for visitors in the month of August. And they have averaged over a thousand visitors a day. The FDPC treasurer Dan Coin attended an H cap promotional event. At the Heinz History Center this past weekend and ad had free advertising for the Heritage Center. He gave out over seventy-five pamphlets that I created in twenty twenty-two. He connected with visitors, some of whom were North Hills residents. And it was a great opportunity to share information about the HCC with audiences outside of our normal circles of communication. Franklin Park Community Day at Blueberry Hill Park featured a display of their historic archives. And I personally helped Donna Platt and town manager Reg Ebbner sort through, refine and set up their display to commemorate Franklin Park's bicentennial. Into addition to all of that, we've also hosted six lectures at the Heritage Center. The History of Football in Pittsburgh presented by the Heinz History Center docent Jim Haller. The Horns Hun, Lingerie Lady by local historian and McCamless resident Sue Morris. The Wall, A History of the Western Penitentiary by former prison administrator and retired Colonel Joel Dixon. Which had forty people in attendance. Historic Structures of North Park presented by Allegheny County Park Ranger Deglin McManus. Had seventy people, over seventy people for two sessions. Pittsburgh Playwrights August Wilson, a lecture from Catherine Calhoun, the Director of Education and Community Engagement. At the August Wilson African-American Cultural Center. The Nike Missile Sites in the North Hills Lecture and Hike in conjunction with naturalist Katie Stanley of North Park's Latadami Nature Center. And the Allegheny County Police and Fire Academy. We had over eighty people for the lecture. Fifteen people for the hike up to the police academy and twenty more who joined us at the top, um, for a tour of the former Nike Missile Site. In Q1 of twenty twenty-three, I commissioned a coloring book of local historic landmarks from McCamless artist and illustrator Janine Murch. The coloring book has eight illustrations with a brief description of its relevancy in our community's history. The coloring books are for sale at Town Hall, the HCC and Chanel Farms for two dollars each. I took over the Facebook page in the fall of twenty twenty-two and our reach is up forty-three percent. Up to fi- fifty-four thousand nine hundred and eighteen accounts. We have one thousand two hundred and forty-seven page likes. One thousand four hundred and fifty followers and two hundred and nineteen new likes in that time, up by sixteen point five percent. Our most popular posts include a post about Asthema Pharmacy, which reached over ten thousand accounts. Potter Park, which reached almost seven thousand and a McCamless then and now photo, which reached five point four thousand. Facebook continues to be an essential way for me to communicate our programming and events, as well as share pieces of history through photos and facts from our permanent collection. In Q2 of twenty twenty-three, I worked with Brandy Smith, Public Relations and Communication Specialist. For the North Allegheny School District to commemorate the district's seventy-fifth anniversary through their academic calendar, which is mailed to every student in the district. I selected over a dozen historic photos from our permanent collection to use in the calendar showcasing the history of each school in the district. Along with volunteer Andrew McLaughlin, we provided fact-checking on the information listed for each month. And photo credits on each page credit the Heritage Center. FDPC members Chuck Ironman and Joe Wall are be to, are to be commended for their work in getting our beautiful new sign installed. CW Electrical donated all of the electrical work to supply the sign and outdoor lighting to illuminate the HCC at night. A huge thank you to them for their contributions. Smart Signs did a wonderful job fabricating and installing the sign. In just a few hours and the sign has already made a significant improvement in the professionalism of our facility. And allows us to advertise not only for HCC events, but for town happenings as well. Volunteers are the lifeblood of the HCC. Without them, it simply would not exist. And thus far in twenty twenty-three, we have gained six new volunteers, bringing our total to thirty-nine. I've made connections with the Key Club and the National Honor Society at NASH and include high school students in that list of new volunteers. Volunteers have come to the HCC with a varying background of skills, talents and professional experience, all with the same goal in mind. To improve and celebrate our community. Our volunteers include a scientist, educators, salespeople, a security expert. A former nonprofit executive, small business owners and students, among many. The choice, the choice to spend our valuable time contributing to the ongoing success of the HCC speaks volumes to the work that we have been doing. And continue to do, as well as to the team we have made with the HCC to support one another. We have chosen to live in the McCamless community, raise our families here, send our children to school here, go to church. And contribute time, talents and expertise to our community to ensure the HCC's success. It should not go unrecognized. The town owes a debt of gratitude to the volunteers. The following numbers are approximate. The other FDPC members volunteer hours have not yet been tallied. But in January, we've had two hundred and twelve volunteer hours just in the Heritage Center. February, two hundred and eighteen, March, two hundred and thirty-nine, April, two hundred and thirty-three. May, two forty-two, June, two hundred, and July, two hundred and fifty-two. And all those numbers are sure to go up once we tally at the end of this year. For upcoming events, um, on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, as was announced earlier, we will host the PA Trolley Museum. For a reprise of their trolley trails through the North Hills program. And we anticipate over eighty guests over two lectures about the Harmony Line and how it transformed the North Hills neighborhoods. We hosted them last year. And, um, it was a wonderful program and we are happy to have them back. On Thursday, October thirteenth, Christopher Whitlatch, author of Notorious Pittsburgh, is coming to the HCC to share some of Pittsburgh's more fun. True crime stories. And on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, the FDPC presents the first annual Shining Star Gala, which honors eight people. Who have contributed a lifetime of volunteerism to our community. The gala will be held at the Chadwick and Wexford and tickets will be available online. On our website very soon. I have brought with me this evening sponsorship packets and we will contribute to, continue to solicit contributions to support our event. All proceeds will benefit the programming and operations of the HCC. I hope you plan to attend to support the HCC. And those community members who have positively impacted our community. In December, we will hold another Breakfast with Santa in McCamless Crossing and there'll be more details to come on that as the date approaches. There's so much more that I can share about what we've done this year and will continue to share, and I appreciate your time and attendance. I'm tremendously proud of the strides we have made to improve the Heritage Center over the past few years. And we are a front-facing part of McCamless's government and tax dollars at work, and all of us take a lot of pride in being representatives. Please support our efforts in any way you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. I only have one thing to add with the minutes from the meeting. We recognized at the meeting the passing of Didi Rittman, a retired North Allegheny teacher. Who was a really good friend of the center. So that concludes the FDPC report.
I just want to make a comment, uh, to Abby and the whole staff, you know, thanks for all your volunteer hours, for everything that you do for us. Um, the numbers are phenomenal. We go from a, you know, it's no longer just the museum in McCamless. So you really are doing a lot. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Public comment?
I'll, I'll ask it. Public comments on recreation committee items?
Go along with the FDPC. Um, first of all, I mean, we're lucky to have Abby LaCoste. As our executive director, but the reason that I'm coming up for a public comment is the sign. We'd like the ability to turn on the color on the sign. It's not gonna make a difference. It's not gonna be a hazard. Um, you know, we originally got the sign with the idea it was gonna be the black and white. Well, the, the, the color portion of the sign is very simple to turn on. And again. The, to maximize the effectiveness of the sign, we'd ask council's approval to put it in color. Thank you.
And I suggest, Joe, it'd be easy to turn off if it is a problem, correct?
Yes.
I'd be willing to try it. I mean, I don't see many, I drive by and I actually think it looks kind of weird in black and white. Is it a head nod? Or is this a, something a little more formal?
I'd like to take a look at.
The approval of the sign with, with black and white.
What this, what would like Ryan say? Chief Ryan? I mean, what do the police think? Do they think it's unsafe to put it in color? Cause Joe just mentioned it won't cause any. Distraction. Is that why it's black and white?
There was a previous council member who was worried that it would be obtrusive if it was in color. So the, the agreement was to put it in black and white. Myself personally, I think it looks kind of weird in black and white. I feel like, you know, every other digital billboard sign out there is color. And ours, it's actually, I feel it's hard to see some of the things because it's black and white.
So we're, we're open to it, so.
I mean, can I make a motion tonight to try it out for a month period for feedback?
Or you'd have to mend the agenda, cause it's not on there.
Why don't we put it on for next month then?
Yeah.
I don't want to get into it. It's a pain.
Next two weeks.
Yeah.
I, I agree. This is Trish and, um, because we may, we allowed the sign explicitly in black and white. I feel like we need to be presented with the, um, a couple of weeks to look at it, make a decision before we vote on it, a change.
Would it be okay just to make a color for the next two weeks and that way we can make a motion? Then we won't have to say we want to look at it? Is that okay?
We have a.
That's not.
Pass it says it can't be.
Yeah, there's already been a.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, can you go down and have a meeting? Color for, and you can look at it, sure, but not for right for two weeks.
Let's just deal with it at next meeting. I do like the, if someone could take video of it, you know, at, at night, then we're all not standing on the road. So, yeah, if we could just get video of it.
We'll figure that out.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. Better for public comments? Moving on, uh, the town manager's report.
Now, the town manager's report, uh, gave you all a copy, the, here and sent you one via email. Do you have any questions? Please let me know.
Any questions, Brian? Hearing none. Uh, engineers report.
Uh, the engineers report was also included in your packet. Uh, Kelly is here from Gateway. Anyone has any questions related to that? Report.
Our attorney's report.
Our report was also in the packet. Happy to answer any questions, although it's probably more appropriate for an executive session. It's the end of my report.
Okay, old business. This is just a cleanup here, right, Brian, this one.
So, yes, so we, we passed this resolution to apply for this grant. Uh, I received correspondence from the state saying that we should add a second signature. To the resolution, so in order to handle that, we have to pass a new resolution that is adding the council president's also signature on the grant application.
And this is the appropriate wording here. We don't need to add anything to that.
Nope.
Okay.
Then I'd like to make the motions a second time. Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution number eleven of twenty twenty-three. Series requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant of. Two hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. To be used for sidewalk connectivity and the Americans with Disabilities Act ramps off of North Meadows Drive.
Second, Dr. Rob.
Thank you.
Everyone in favor? Signified by saying aye. And opposed? Uh, new business. This is the Valvoline to RJ.
Right, yes.
It, uh, we have a presentation.
I don't know that they have a formal presentation, but we do have a couple of representatives from the company that are online.
It's a no formal presentation and they're here as, as needed for questions.
That's right.
Okay. Does anybody?
Does anybody have questions of RJ or the development team? About the about the Valvoline?
I stood in on this, I mean, I stood in the planning commission meeting. It's a pretty cut and dry. We changed in the bank. Plan Commission was very thorough. They talked about environmental impacts, traffic. It was well thought out and well done. So just my two cents that was there.
Or something.
If we're at that point, I will make a motion to approve the land development application for the redevelopment. Of one zero five three three Perry Highway into a Valvoline Incential Oil Change Facility. As submitted by one zero five three three Perry Highway LLC. Contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in the Planning and Development Staff Report dated. August twenty-fourth. Twenty. There was a date you told me that.
No, that was different.
Okay, August twenty-fourth. Uh, two thousand twenty-three, and the town engineer review letter dated August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
There's a second.
Second.
Like a Mary Ann. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Seems to be, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Next up. So the first one is the modification report. This is for the parking I'll be talking about in Fort North Allegheny.
Do we mind pull up the?
Yeah, you have, you have something here. On Google Maps and. Bill, do you want to come? I don't know if anyone's gonna have questions, but you can. Yep. So the big question, I guess, was where it was. You have a, can you pull that up?
There's there's a picture in here.
Ah, yes. Yeah. Yes. It's uh.
Can we get it on the? He scrolls on.
Yeah, it's actually very well with the uh.
So you're gonna take the sign down?
Yeah.
No, no, the sign will be there. It's it's past.
Yeah, yeah, that's where we're at.
We actually will next, but it's already been, it's loud.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Very nice.
You can't go again, so we're we're just waiting here for the load. Yeah.
It's. Okay, where is? Yes.
Yes, you are.
Yes.
There's.
Yeah.
There is.
Bill. For those who don't know yet.
Yes.
Oh, my name is Bill Kirk, and I'm here representing North Allegheny School District. I'm the Assistant Director of Project Management there.
If we have any questions of Bill.
Answer.
I'll go after the motion, and then if you want to. Right now.
Request to allow them to do.
For gravel.
Gravel, and then let her see is to approve in the land.
Yeah, so I will make a motion to approve modification request number one for Hillview Overflow Parking Lot Land Development Application. To allow a gravel parking surface instead of asphalt or concrete. If granted, the approval is conditioned upon full plan approval being obtained.
A second. Second, Mr. Casey, so I know I'm clear what we're both. So this is, this is the no timeframe.
Yes, what I put up was a no timeframe option. I'm comfortable with that.
So. Is there any, any questions further than that? Okay. So. Uh, everyone in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Modification request, motion for the modification request.
Make it look.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You got a good part, for example, you'll. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And then the next one here is the through the land development.
Yes, so I I make a motion to approve the land development application for Hillview Overflow Parking Lot. As submitted by North Allegheny School District located at two hundred Hillview Lane on the North Allegheny Intermediate Campus. Continued upon all items being addresses identified in the Planning and Development Staff Report. In the Town Engineers Review Letter, both dated August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Second, that sounded like Carolyn. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any? Uh, any against? No, okay, motion carries. Okay, last, this is the. Oh, thank you, Bill. This one, what is this one again?
So this is um. What RJ spoke about during her planning director's report. This is the uh. This is a resolution that we are going to work through an amended ordinance, an amendment to our zoning.
Any further questions on that? Okay, for zone for motion? Whoever.
I'll make a motion to adopt the tentatively identified resolution number twelve of the two thousand twenty-three series. To authorize the advertisement of a public hearing on entrance middle to the planning commission in Allegheny County Department of Economic Development, a proposed tentatively identified ordinance number one five four two. In place tentatively identified proposed ordinance number one five four two in pending status as of the date of the publication of the first publication of the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Thank you for the lengthy. Uh, we have a a a motion and a second. Everyone in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed of the motion? Hearing none, okay, motion carries. Uh, next up, the junior council member.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item uh pending some further review of the applicants.
Second.
Second.
And second, Dr. Lotta, everyone in favor?
Aye.
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 Get it right, thanks, perfect. Okay, last up, is there any uh public comments on non-agenda?
Before that, Mr. President, I have a another um new business item. I have uh in my ward um some concerned residents um regarding some on-street parking with commercial vehicles. Um, I would like to ask administration to take a look into that some more. If possible. Um, as long as everybody's comfortable with that, um, the the question in hand is some overnight parking for commercial. It's been brought to me with about twenty residents. Um, I would like administration to see what our options are.
Of course.
And possibly present back to us.
Sure.
What sort of thing? So I just want to make that aware of everyone here, if that's all right.
Of course, yeah, moving to the kind of head nod that we are. You know, look into ordinance with our.
Also, this could lead to a on-street parking ordinance.
We'll see what comes of it. I'm not sure. I I don't want to go.
I got it. It's just we're gonna.
Further, but let's get the ball rolling and see what we come back with.
Yeah. Head nods, run good with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's right.
Okay. Public uh non-agenda comments.
Glenn Nelson, two oh five eight, Kerry Show Road. Uh, just to clarify one thing, the um. When I spoke earlier about the communication, uh, I think the new websites work and working well. Mike, Mike, I don't have any problems with the how all the website works. Mike, Mike concerns are more about, you know. What parameters or there are about. Consistently. The what's with consistency and the template for the things that are on there and aren't out there. Um, but I do have one question for the attorney. And that is, is what are the, what are these, what is the obligations for council committees? With respect to publishing agendas and uh what happens if they don't? I mean, if you could clarify that a little bit.
So Glenn, this is more of a comment period where you.
Well, I don't know when I can ask a question.
Yeah, we can certainly uh take a sidebar here at this end, and we. A lot of that detail, but.
I just need a little bit. It would be helpful to have a little bit of clarification of things. You hear rumors about things. You don't know whether they're true or they're not true. And so I thought if I'd asked the question, this would be a way to find out that, find out an answer uh with respect to that. I, this all becomes to me. Significantly more important, given the lack of new meetings.
Glenn, I I will address it with you after the meeting. We can sit down and talk, and obviously I'll have some help from my solicitor, but I can answer your questions that you've asked here. Uh, after the meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Glenn, for your comments. Uh, any other uh non-agenda items comments? Seeing none, we're gonna adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel matters, and no further action will be taken. Thank you.
Ryan, I think part of our, the timing issue, if he's looking for minutes.
Yeah.
You know.